It's 10 o'clock. We'll call the mid-month meeting to order this morning, the Commissioners' meeting. Sall rise for pledge allegiance and invocation, please.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's pray. Gracious and loving God, we just thank you for this day. Thank you for the opportunity that you allow us to have. We thank you, Lord, for your grace and your hands that protect the citizens of this county, the national disaster that we had. We pray for the assistance for the people that had property damage. We just pray for the outgoing everyone. We pray, Lord, for their continued safety, guidance, and direct us what we do in this meeting, this committee. These things we ask in your holy name. Christ sakes, amen.
Welcome everyone out this morning. I guess everybody's had a time to look through the minutes. Late 3:00.
What's the agenda first, Mr. Chairman?
I would make a motion with the modification. We only have one public comment in the beginning.
We agreed to, and I don't make the.
I'll second that motion. Discussion. We done passed on this. In favor, raise your right hand. Have a vote. Thank you. The motion on the minutes, accept it.
Move, Mr. Chairman.
Motion here, second.
Second.
Motion, second, and discussion. In favor, raise your right hand. Have a vote. Come on down to a public comment time. Sir, come right up.
I'm Robert Overby. I'm the chairman of the Veterans Advisory Committee. And some of you don't know about the committee, I guess, but I'll give you a little miniature rundown. Most of our committee members are veterans, one from each of our military services and serving from a veterans organization. We have two county commissioners that's on our committee and Michael's the on the committee also ex officio. I'm a life member of the Marine Corps League and a life member of the Veterans of Foreign Wars. I'm the current commandant, Walter F. Orsborn, Jr., detachment 1298 here in Sparta. I've been a continuous member of the VFW for 52 years. Our other veteran members are also members of one or more of the veteran organizations, Veterans of Foreign Wars, the American Legion, or the Disabled American Veterans. Most of us have been involved with the Veterans Memorial Park since its inception. In October of 2016, the Ad Hoc Veterans Advisory Committee was considering improvements and additions to the Veterans Memorial at the Veterans Memorial Park. The county didn't have any money and basically told the committee that we were on our own to develop a plan to raise funds by selling engraved bricks, identifying honorably discharged veterans, and soliciting donations. First, the committee had to devise a means by which to legally sell the bricks and solicit funds. So the committee asked the county commissioners to give them their approval to go ahead within incorporation. The commissioners gave their approval and the committee put their plans into action. Since there was no county funds available, the committee members bought bricks for a total of 28 and placed the money $1,300 in an account to fund the nonprofit corporation process and seed money for the project startup. Once the committee was incorporated and received its 501(c)(3) nonprofit status, in August 2017, it was retroactive February 2017, we began our fundraising and have continued since then. We have solicited money for the benches at either end of the memorial wall and the marble bench itself leading to the soccer fields. We have also solicited funds for the lights and asphalt paving of the parking lot. We hope to continue our brick sales and fundraising after Chinese pandemic COVID-19 is over. I'm not here this morning to toot my veterans committee horn. I am here to inform you of recent vandalism at the Veterans Memorial Park. I think most of you are aware of it. It seems that since we didn't have a statue of our Confederate heroes to desecrate, some low-life lawless individual with no personal honor for themselves or anyone else took it upon themselves to give the boot to our light fixtures, kicking them over and breaking them. Our surveillance cameras were totally inadequate for identifying the worthless culprits. It is sad to think that these individuals might be products for schools, our communities, working and living here amongst us. Lots of anger and no personal honor, respect for anyone or anything, apparently watching too much television about the burning, looting, and pillaging up in the night in New York, Philadelphia, Seattle, and some of our other urban areas. It is obvious that we're not immune from actions of such ignorant and stupid people. Our committee and the county manager have met several times to discuss the matter and how to best remedy it. It is our opinion that it's not practical to jackhammer the concrete in front of the wall in an attempt to reinstall the lights, mount or reconnect wires to the under the wall. It's cost prohibitive and it would ruin the aesthetics of the monument wall. We have decided that the best approach is to install new trundle lights across the top of the monument and connect the electrical wires from electrical boxes in the rear which are still intact. Our committee has ordered and paid for eight new lights at a cost of $562. They were to arrive on 8/14/20, but guess what? They're not here yet. They should come in this week. They were paid for out of our maintenance and enhancement fund. We have on each light for existing emblems, an extra one for our newest service, the Space Force, an emblem which will be purchased in the future, and two extras for emergency replacement. We're currently looking for two 14-16-foot flagpoles of similar construction as the three flagpoles that we currently have. These 14-16-foot poles will be used to mount our enhanced Wi-Fi video surveillance cameras, which we are also purchasing. We're also looking at a construction-grade heavy aluminum poles as an alternative mount, since they will be off to each end of the monument away from it where they can give a good view across to see what's going on at any time. And our Wi-Fi cameras will give enough resolution to read tag numbers and identify faces for prosecution. There's a view with cell phones and Wi-Fi code, which the county manager will have, will be able to monitor any activity down there 24/7. County manager will have the code for distribution. It is our recommendation that a responsible county employee be designated by job description to physically walk through the park on a daily basis. If anything is out of the ordinary and vandalism is detected, he is to notify his department head, and the department head is to notify the county manager immediately. Video is to be secured as evidence so appropriate legal action can be taken and restitution made by the culprits if they're over 18 or by their parents if they're under 18. All in all, we have been very fortunate that the emblems were not damaged nor defaced. It cost over $3,000 a piece. None of our veterans' memorial bricks have been damaged or tampered with. Our committee has budgeted for the cost of the lights, poles, wires, Wi-Fi cameras, and installation materials for up to $4,500. Our committee has agreed to pay up to this amount. Beautiful Veterans Memorial Park has been well received and supported by the citizens of Allegheny County. The Veterans of Foreign Wars, the Marine Corps League, the American Legion, and Disabled American Veterans have held many Memorial Day and Veterans Day ceremonies in front of the memorial wall. We had a retired U.S. Army Veterans funeral there a couple of years ago. And I have a Vietnam veteran that says that when he goes, that's where he wants his funeral. Memorial wall, the benches, and the Walk of Honor are fitting tributes to our veterans. Marble bench that we solicited for the park is a good place to sit down, overlooks the memorial wall, our POW and MIA benches. All three of these benches are good for just sitting down and resting and contemplating. I have a picture of the lights here that are supposed to be in shortly. They're trundle lights. They go across the top of the wall over each emblem. We can connect them in the back. We've still got the wires and everything in the back where it shouldn't be a major problem to connect in where the others are disconnected. Won't be accessible to some hoodlum.
No, about when the project will be finished?
Still trying to get those poles. We want to, the flagpoles themselves, they're very expensive and shipping is atrocious. If we can get good quality, heavy-grade aluminum, we're going to try to go with that. They have some that's 20-foot, and what we may have to do is put them four-foot in the ground, concrete them in, but they're good for 118 mile an hour winds. So there's not going to be that much weight or anything on them. It's not like a flag up there going round and round. We're going to put the cameras up there where they've got a good view down in front of the monument.
Any questions?
Question?
There is a manufacturing company over here at Bristol. I don't know if you're aware of that or not. It makes flagpoles.
Didn't know that.
I can get you the name. Our church bought one for our cemetery, and I took a trailer and picked it up and saved about 350 bucks.
Well, that happens because the regular flagpoles, you're looking at $650 each, and then the shipping, if they got to come a long distance, you're paying as much for shipping as you are for poles.
Yeah, that's what, that's the situation. We just ran us right there across the road from Food City's distribution hub. It's very convenient, but I'll get you that.
Okay. I'd like to get that. We'll try to use every avenue that we can to get as cheap as we can and as good as we can.
He told me they had flagpoles sitting at the New York City, all up in the World Trade Center, all around. Big company.
It'd be good to deal some local folks if we could.
Any other comments? Certainly. Thank you, sir. Appreciate what you do.
We'll be paying.
Thanks for your leadership and dedication there, Robert.
Anybody else have any comments this time?
Mr. Chairman, I believe that we have represented from this Congresswoman, Virginia Fox, present. And I know that he is busy. I would request that he be allowed to speak at this time, sir.
Right up to the microphone, sir.
John was going to put me on the spot. I'm Bob Make. I am.
Colonel, you know a master gunnerie sergeant who's going to put you on the spot at every opportunity.
Absolutely. And that's typical of the Marines, too.
Not to hold it against the army.
I served in the 7th Division in Korea back in the, during the Vietnam era, and there's a lot of back and forth between the Marines and 7th Division at the Chosan Reservoir. So, folks, I just wanted, I am district director. I just wanted to talk with John and let you know that the Congresswoman is aware of the situation up here, and she was not ignoring you, but just so you'll know, 72% of the district she will represent in January is new to us. And we went from very few municipalities to, I think, like Gaston County has 39. So she's been out trying to meet the new people that she'll be dealing with. So I came to represent her today. So if there's anything that we can do from our office, I'll be more than glad to take that back and discuss it with her and see what we can do. As you know, right now, Congress is in recess. I won't get into the politics of all that and everything, but hopefully that if there's anything that we can do from the federal level for Sparta and Allegheny County, I assure you that we will be more than willing to do it, and I will push it as hard as I can. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Very much, sir.
Go on down, presentation to the board. We can get an earthquake update from Emerson Daniel.
Morning.
Morning.
Good morning.
Been quite a trying week. We're all here and we're all making it. So just wanted to give you folks a quick update. Some of the numbers that we have as of 8:00 a.m. this morning, we have slightly over 500 different reports of damage. Those reports are everything from minor to extreme. Around 60 of those have been reported as having major damage. That damage constitutes at least 40% of the value of that structure. We have eight families that are being taken care of by Red Cross, a total of 14 individuals, and perhaps more to come. Still don't have any real way to track the folks that are just staying with friends and family. Last week, we had eight engineers come up from our USAR teams, Urban Search and Rescue Teams, and the Office of State Fire Marshal. We've demobilized most of those folks. Still have one here. We felt like we had most of the severe cases of damage surveyed. We still wanted to keep one expert around to help us clear up some of the remaining stuff. That's my quick and dirty little update, but I'd be more than happy to field any questions that you folks might have.
Are we seeing much repeat damage to places you've already been?
You mean calling back into us? We've had a handful attributed mostly to the aftershocks. And these, what we're talking about here is homes or structures that were significantly damaged to start with. Now that they've had an aftershock, or maybe even with a significant rainfall that we've had, we're seeing some more damage to those homes. I mean, it's the same, but like, for instance, if one of the foundation walls was cracked, it's the same wall. It's just gotten worse. So the actual impact on the damage may not change that much as far as the number goes. We're still working on compiling the data for a dollar amount. Our engineers don't work in dollars. They work in percentages. So when I reference, say, 40%, they, you know, that's them saying that they feel like 40% of that structure's value is lost, or that's what it would take to repair it to its original condition. They work that way so that they can work in Charlotte or Atlanta, Puerto Rico, wherever it is they go. The damage is going to be in the millions. Don't know exactly yet. That number changes every second. I know the question that's burning on everyone's mind is, are we going to get any help? Answer is, I think so, but I don't know for sure. And I don't want to come out here and say yes, because I don't know yet. And once we get all that, our plan was to get our packet done by Friday. We had several more reports come in Friday and over the weekend, so we're trying to push that out to today. But then it's our goal to get that sent on down to Raleigh by close of business today. It goes to the Recovery Division of North Carolina Emergency Management, at which point they will evaluate the best course of action to apply for some assistance for these folks.
I would assume DOTs checked the bridges and the roads. Was there any bridge damage or?
When I reached out to our local site engineer, Jason Joyce is his name, the maintenance engineer over here at the DOT shop, they compiled some data for me on the damages that they had to some of the roads and such. I think we're aware that Chestnut Grove Church Road had a crack and some things like that. They were working on the bridges. His inclination was that our bridges were in pretty good shape. So I'm not aware of any significant damage there. Now, they did incur some costs for some of the breaks and stuff that they have repaired, the tune of about $75,000.
When FEMA figures, or whoever figures the final dollar amount, does the highway dollars go into that figure?
There's two separate things here at work. One is what they call individual assistance, which is the people. And then they have what's called public assistance, which is a misnomer. It's not the public. It's public infrastructure. So that's things like our buildings, water utilities, highways, other nonprofits like fire departments and such. So they lump those things into those two categories. So all of those other damages, like you mentioned, roads, will be accounted for, but they'll be separated from the individual residential type things.
About people's wells or springs, there was some concern that some wells had gone dry. Does FEMA help with well?
Fortunately, the answer is not one that you're going to like. FEMA's mentality is that the damages to the structure are what counts. Now, I don't know how you live in a house without water, but they do not include wells or driveways as part of the value of their home. Unfortunately, that's very unfortunate. We've had maybe a half a dozen cases of folks that have reported that they either didn't have water or had water that was unsuitable, they felt like, to drink. Now, if someone does need water, Lowe's was gracious enough. Lowe's Hardware donated us a truckload of case water. So if someone needs water, reach out to us. Actually, the sheriff is the one that's handling that. So if someone needs drinking water, we'll get them some drinking water. Other questions?
Yes. Information, why aren't we receiving it daily?
I've been pushing it to the county manager every second I get it.
We're not getting it, as commissioners. First time I heard that we had 400 structures damaged was on August 12th. Now we've got 500. 60 major damaged. You know, one of the big things that we've got to do, because we're elected, we are supposed to be in charge. People are asking us questions. It is embarrassing whenever we don't have answers. We have electronic means. We've got telephone. We've got text. Right now, I am receiving calls, texts, telling me that we are condemning buildings. You tell me we aren't. Where are we getting it out on social media, doing something to tell these people that we do not condemn buildings? Because it's running rapid out there on Facebook. Allegheny County, only thing faster than the tag on Facebook is the rumor control. You've got to do something. Please, public. We've just heard it. County and state employees do not condemn property. They give you a percentage of damage. Whenever you hear this, please correct the people that are out there. I would like, for someone, for someone, please, if we, give us an assessment. If daily you would tell us that we have found placement for, the Red Cross now has five families that are being assisted, the damaged structures, any increase, anything of that nature. So whenever the public calls me or asks me as I walk down the street, what is the actual remnants? remnants, or what's going on, I would appreciate it. I had a doctor's appointment today, I had to change, he was not aware, because his comment to me was, whenever I told him, at that time, my knowledge was four hundred structures damaged, he said, well, we know nothing in Greensboro, we just know you had an earthquake. That's part of the problem, we aren't getting any, we aren't getting any help, is, it was an event, and now it's forgotten, we aren't telling people how badly we've been hurt, so please, somebody, simple text, simple email to each county commissioner, and I would be appreciative, my fellow commissioners don't care, that's fine, take your name off of it, but at least let me know that we have no further reports of structural damage, we have no further reports of major damage, something of this nature, so that I would at least be informed. Now, the decision not to open the Emergency Operations Center, I understand was yours, taken unilaterally, that is a political decision, this board, if we had read the Emergency Action Plan, when he declared, whenever he requests for the Emergency Action Declaration, at that time, the Emergency Operations Center should have automatically been opened up. Daniel made the decision unilaterally not to open it, that sits on our table, we've gotta have a central place for information to flow into, so that the political structure can make a decision. Now, I hope the county manager is gonna have a hot wash once we've finally gotten this behind us, because we need to discuss this, we've got a sheriff who's responsible for law enforcement calling the White House. We are running around like monkeys with footballs, no coordination, no structure. I've asked that the Emergency Operation Plan be distributed to each commissioner, I haven't seen it in my box, I've read it, but I believe whenever you do get it in your box, you should read it, this is a precursor, we now know that we are on a major fault line, that means that we will have another earthquake in the future, if we had had fires, we would have been up a creek without a paddle, we don't have, we know what our deficiencies are with getting water, this is a wake-up call, as it was on October the twenty-third, the first meeting in November, I requested that you read the Emergency Action Plan. Emergency Action Plan is a off-the-shelf document, you fill in the blanks, you have a plan for a train derailment, a dam burst, or a crash at the airport, we've got something there to build on, needs to do what, Department of Transportation, we've got to communicate with these inner agencies next time we have an event like this, please, give us the information, this is what we've got to have, we answer to the people, we are elected. All I have, Mr. Chairman.
Well, I disagree with you on part of your sermon there, I think our group has done a good job, they rolled out here Sunday, but just let me talk, I didn't interrupt you, you could have been on the phone to the White House, nobody stopped you, but you didn't, so don't fuss at the rest of them, they're doing their job, no, wait a minute, I'm not doing, the sheriff did make the call, which, that was fine, there's no political game here, the only political game is what's going on, they've done a good job, they rolled out there Sunday, we was in conversation with them, and we had our emergency meeting Sunday afternoon at three o'clock, we've got things rolling along pretty good, and they give updates along the way, they got jobs to do, and I'm gonna take up on them, they've done a good job.
And I will echo your comments on the good job, they've done a fantastic job.
What are you reaching and preaching to them for, then?
Because we are the leadership of this county.
You are the leadership of this county.
We're not the managers.
They're the one that backs us up, they've done a good job and never-
We have got, we've got to be kept informed, they've done an outstanding job, whenever it comes down, we have got to be aware of what is going on, not a weekly update, we need a daily update.
I agree with that, being aware, but they have made us aware, everything, well, they've sent out two or three emails.
I haven't gotten an email.
We met Friday, didn't we?
We got, right.
Today's Monday.
Okay, Friday was what, fourteenth, I would like to want it every day.
We didn't work over the weekend, Mr. Commissioner.
I know you didn't work over the weekend, and you took a well-deserved rest.
We're gonna wind this conversation up.
I compliment you, you've worked, you've done Trojan service, this is some wrinkles that we have got in here that we've got to take, got to take care of, be aware of that.
But everything else, sir?
Thank you.
Hey, Daniel.
Thank you for everything you're doing, guys.
I have one more thing I'd like to say, team that's worked for me this week, I didn't ask any of them to come in my office and help me, they did it, my team's done one heck of a job.
I agree.
Yeah, busted their butts.
I agree.
I'd go to war with these guys any day, thank you.
Thank you, appreciate all of you, Travis, everything you want to say?
I just hear from-
Buddy, anybody have any questions for Travis?
Travis, one question, we know we've got approximately estimated thirty thousand dollars at the swimming pool in that building, it's damaged from the earthquake, if we repair that damage, will we have to bring that structure up ADA compliance now?
It's just a repair.
Just a repair, we can't improve though.
That number coming from the engineer is what he can see, can't see the pipes and the concrete, I mean, these are just, we're doing rapid assessments, it's all we've been doing, most structures, thirty minutes, we're in, we're out, we're gone, if not quicker.
Those numbers could rapidly go up when you start the process.
They could go down once you get in there, you know, because some things could be cosmetic, and you think it's thirty percent, and you get in there and it's twenty, once you get the wall apart.
I was just worried that we had to bring it up to ADA compliance, because that's gonna run the bill up quite a bit, I believe. Thank you for everything you've done, God bless you.
At the best, right now, it's just a guesstimate of what's damaged at the pool, not until, you won't know until you start digging in and finding out the structural damage, and it could be, stay at that number, or it could double, triple, we just don't know.
Or it could go down.
I do, and it was really kind of more for Daniel, but I'll throw it out here just for the public, I know at the end of our meeting the other day, we got a report from the schools damages, and I assume that they're working with that, and that's probably part of the public bucket of money that Daniel mentioned, public and the private section, I know that it seemed to be there's some extensive damages up there, and I'm not really asking, if you don't know anything, I recognize that that's, the school's running that, their end up there.
The schools, for their insurance, they have their own engineer, and so, instead of wasting our time going somewhere where there's gonna be another engineer looking, with our engineers that are volunteer.
And I guess my question is, do you have any knowledge of whether they're communicating their numbers, or their prospective numbers?
Yes, they're communicating their numbers, and actually, Michael got me a copy of the preliminary report.
Alright, thank you.
And I know they're doing further.
Any other questions?
Just to follow up, does the school numbers count towards the county's numbers reaching this magic number?
That all factors in the public, anything, infrastructure, public, roads, water lines, or houses.
Thank you, thank you, Travis, appreciate the job you guys doing, thank you.
Now, in letting the knowledge come in, I will say, we felt like it was more important to get to more houses than it was to sit down and do a report every day, sorry, no offense, Commissioner.
Thank you. Next, the financial update, April hand.
I have a report, good morning, I have a report, if I can pass that out. This is gonna be a monthly report from the finance office, we're gonna do this during the daily commissioner meetings from here on out, okay, this is an attempt just to keep the board and the public informed on where we stand financially, I'm gonna start with actually the back page first, and I know that the print's a little bit small, our assistant finance officer, Sydney Moxley, did this for us, this is something that she routinely does, and what this accounts for is the local spending, and each account's payable, that is processed every couple of weeks in the finance office, okay, so if you look down to the total local spending number, and I'll actually read that out for you, because I know it's a little small, fifty-seven thousand, four hundred and thirty-six dollars and sixty-four cents is what was spent out in local spending for July, that accounts for twelve percent of the total AP, now, in that AP, that doesn't sound like a huge number, but it really is, because in that total AP, you're talking about appropriations to the school systems, and appropriations to all those things that are included in the budget. Any questions about this report, I will try to answer them.
Things like Blue Ridge Energy and Skyline fall under local public?
They do fall under local, yes, yes, everything that you see listed right here is what has been paid out in those months, and she actually started in January and printed out through July for the board, number I just quoted is just July. If you'll just flip over to the front page, this is year-to-date revenue and expenditures as taken into account with the approved budget, just in the general fund, the approved budget in the general fund was sixteen million, eight hundred and twenty-three dollars, eight hundred and twenty-three thousand and seventy-five dollars, year-to-date revenue, six hundred and seventy-nine thousand, eight hundred and thirty dollars and ninety-four cents, I will say with that revenue number, that things haven't been posted in the past week, because we haven't had a whole lot of help and finance to do that, okay, also, the tax bills have just went out, so, we're getting the reports down from the tax office, from Rita and her staff, so all those numbers haven't been posted in the system yet, so, when I'm back next month, that number's gonna be a lot bigger, okay, on the revenue side, on the expenditure side, two million, three hundred and thirty-eight thousand, nine hundred and fifty-four dollars and thirty-six cents, of course, that does take into effect all those special appropriations that were paid out, there's things like insurance that we pay upfront each year, things like that, there's always, seems to be more expenses upfront when the budget is just passed. Then I just took the, I did a percentage for you, revenue is point oh four, it's four percent, basically, expenditures is fourteen point two percent, is basically in relation to the approved general fund budget, bank balance, and this is as of today, five million, seven hundred and sixteen thousand, three hundred and twenty-two dollars and fifty-five cents, and we compared that to last year at this time, last year's bank balance at the end of July, because that's the bank statement that I had to go with, two million, six hundred and fifty-five thousand, one hundred and eighty-four dollars and fifty-nine cents, so that kind of gives you a little snapshot for a year. Can I answer any questions about this report?
You would help me on your year-to-date expenditures, if you'd show year-to-date budget as comparison to that.
Okay, right, we'll adjust this report as it goes along, so.
Do you anticipate we're getting year-end numbers as far as knowing our fund balance?
Sorry, say that again?
Year-end numbers to know our fund balance that we ended up with?
We have to work with the auditors on that, and the auditors, they were supposed to come the end of August, first of September, that's actually been delayed because of the COVID-19 situation till the end of October, now, we do have to do a rollover from last fiscal year to this fiscal year, which basically comes into play, you know, we're waiting on sales tax numbers from June, because they always come at least a month late, so, we're having to work with the auditors on that, and all of that has not been done, so I do not have a definite answer of when that will be either.
From all I'm hearing, sales tax, or sales revenue, sales tax is up, and we'd budgeted for it to be down, so, I think that's gonna help us.
Yeah, it should.
Continues on that upward trend, would be great.
Yeah, if it continues, yes.
Any other questions? Bobby?
So, you can't give us a fund balance, a running fund balance is something, is that a possible number to have?
Well, it's un-audited at this point, so I don't know how accurate it would be for me to give you that number, but we can certainly, I can work with Sydney and the county manager on that, and see if we can give you some type of estimate.
No, when we got our letter back in December, everything was sort of geared towards that magic fund balance number, you know, I'd look at that as an important number to see how our finances are going, you know, the finances are a complicated thing, but I don't, I know, my wife can take our checkbook and tell us what's in our fund balance, I don't know how simple that is for the county with as many different functions as they deal with in finance, but fund balance is a key, key word for the state.
It is, and I will also tell you too, I am learning that side of the system, so the more that I learn, it should be simpler for me to find those numbers for you also.
Can I say something?
Yes, sir.
I agree with you, fund balance is important, and that's where we need to get to, have to go through a state stabilization process, so it's, as April identified, we can give you a number, but that number most likely is gonna be adjusted because of the process, but what I want to point out is, is the information we do have, and that's bank balance at this moment, and that's also an important factor that may not get described in a letter, but it is an important factor, and when you see, basically, in a year's time, plus a few, maybe a couple of weeks, you see a three million dollar increase in your bank balance, that's a good place to start, and, you know, you can attribute that to some of the CARES money you receive, the way that we've changed the way that we do distributions of funds, we no longer do lump appropriations, we do monthly, there's a whole combination of financial tools that we're using to increase that bank balance, so, what I would say to this report is, it's certainly a bright spot, we need to continue on this trend, but we will identify that fund balance, and once, once it becomes audited, we'll certainly identify, but that is some months down the road at this point.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Office telephone update, Drew Temple.
This fiscal requirement had been, office telephone, office phone, all of that, yeah, I have RFP, I've assembled RFP, I've got it from, we continue to work on, and we'll put those RFPs together, have it to present to you probably next month.
Any other questions?
On the RFPs for the telephone system, are you also gonna request a backup right now on landline?
We have backhoe fade, commonly referred to whenever a backhoe cuts a fiber optic line, or a copper line, we need to have a backup, because government must function, looking, I'm thinking microwave into a central location, so that if we do have another earthquake, and we lose our fiber optic, or whatever- or whatever we're on right now, that we can automatically switch over. Is that contemplated for the system?
I think we put that in there as an additional, as an add-on. And then you guys make that decision. But we certainly put the RFP out that identifies the needs, the wants, and here it is. And then you guys base your choice on whatever you feel is most appropriate.
So you won't be requesting that backup, but if a.
It'll be a sub.
It'll be a sub?
It'll be a sub at the bottom as an additional, you know, as a precautionary measure, please do this.
Battery backup, of course, things of that nature. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Any further questions? All right, we'll move on down to general business. Fire training facility runoff ditching, Ms. Megan Edwards.
Morning.
Morning.
Is that a new hat?
What?
A new hat?
Mr. Osborne and myself went out to the fire training facility and looked. There is a pond on the property above that has some runoff that is causing a lot of water, sanding water and some issues at the fairgrounds at the fire training facility. So we have looked into some pricing of pipe to pipe that water to the creek. So the piping for 400 feet of 6-inch Schedule 40 pipe is going to run us about $1,500. And then we will also need a drain box to put in at the beginning, which is about $350 and about $1,000 worth of labor. So looking at about $2,850 for this project. And they're going to remove whatever trees necessary and just get this water running into the creek, stopping about 20 feet, is that right, before the creek? And because right now, it's just a swamp through there.
It'll really help dry that area up out there and can be turned into some good usable. Working lots of different stuff out there. It's just a simple fact of getting that overflow down to the creek, Megan expressed there, so. Any questions?
Yes, I've got a question, Mr. Chairman. Why is Parks and Recreation handling this whenever this should be Daniel? Emergency management is fire training facility. Handle Parks and Recreation, do you not? If you have assumed this additional duty, I'd like to know why we haven't got the fire plug in back out there.
There is a working agreement between, one being brought up with the fire commission out there, training center and the fairgrounds. We got the money to do that with. I don't want money's in the fire training facility, though. We don't have that in front of us right at present, huh? So the thing, the objective is we can turn this into a good facility out there in both.
I have, I agree with the assessment. I would vote for the money. My question is, why isn't it under the emergency management department? Because it is a fire training facility.
He doesn't have a budget for that facility, does he? I didn't think he had any money for a fire training facility. So we've been, in years past.
We have not placed any maintenance money in there, but you're the one that we go to.
I think in the past, the fire training facility has been mowed and kind of overseen by Parks and Recreation. Like Mr. Osborne said, it's just, I guess, a mutual agreement. So Daniel has no money in his budget. It was brought to my attention that it needed to be done. So in my maintenance and repair, with the fact that we have no events going on at the fairgrounds this year, as of now, we haven't had any cost to maintenance and repairs and other than the couple of things that we'll have to do to the black building to get ready for court. We don't have anything lined up like we did last year, like renovating the restrooms and the shelters, so.
Well, if the Parks and Recreation, and now we've jumbled everything in there, what about the fairgrounds commission? They've got some money. Have they been approached to kick in?
Have not.
Here again, you have no defining line, who's going to do what? Thank you for the job that you're doing, Megan.
Any further questions, comments? Bobby?
Several questions. One is, how deep is the line going to be buried in the ground, the Schedule 40?
It's going to be about three foot.
That's, right away goes through there, and they bush hog that every so many years. Was a ditch there before with the red terracotta pipe in it. For whatever reason, that terracotta pipe has been broken or become disconnected. Just want to be sure that this Schedule 40 pipe is deep enough that when these heavy vehicles start running over it, it won't break it. That's one thing. Second thing is, this water is not the fairgrounds' water. It's not the fire department's water. It belongs to Charles Jones. He's dumping this water, and he has been for years, apparently, onto the county property. At the least, I think that there should be a conversation with him as to possibly splitting the price of redoing this. Look, I've been out there several times with Bill. There's, he's dumping thousands of gallons of water a day onto our property. Now, being a good neighbor, I would think somebody would help with that cost. It's like building a fence between two people. I don't know if there has been a discussion. I know that there was the possibility of somebody discussing it with him. Project has to be done, make that land usable for whatever reason in the future. Don't disagree with that. I'm not overjoyed that it comes out of Parks and Recreation. Black building on the exterior needs a lot of work, especially on the West End. At some point, if we don't fix that, we're going to lose that wood. Have to replace that whole West End. It should have been painted five years ago.
We do actually have the paint donated to repaint the black building and the labor, so that's in the process of being done.
Discussion was, do we want to keep painting it? Or do we want to put metal or vinyl over it and finish the project once and for all? Painting is the cheaper way out, but it's a continual process to keep that paint, to keep that building in good shape. I think before it's painted, even if the paint is free, we should have some type of cost estimate, which is the best way to preserve that building. Court system, whatever it's going to take, that money should not come out of Parks and Recreation to make that building ready for the system. That money is set aside for Parks and Recreation. I know that we weren't able to do what we wanted to do this year, and we've lost a lot of revenue by not having the ability to use the fairgrounds. I think before money is spent to put in that drain pipe, which is needed, I think that there should be a conversation with the landowner. And I also think before that building, if it's going to be painted, that should be studied to be sure that's the best cost of, the best use of that material.
Donna may be able to speak more for this, but I believe in previous conversation about the piping, there was a statute, maybe, because he's been, this has been going on for so many years, that he has no liability whatsoever. So, but maybe as.
How long ago was the statute run out? And who says that's the day that he started damaging our property? I mean, it's a general statement that can be made by anybody, but there needs to be, if that's the route that the board wants to take, there needs to be an investigation when those other pipes failed. Just to say the statute of limitations ran out doesn't make that legal or make that right. I know we've had the conversation. It's not news to us. If we're going to start spending taxpayers' money, let's spend it in the right way. And there's still such a thing as being a good neighbor.
Anybody have any other questions?
Thanks for what you do, Megan, help this county run.
Be, uh, be in favor of, listen to a motion if anybody has one to do this. Needs to get started, needs to get done. I'm going to make a motion that we start this project. Megan described right there, it's going to be about a $2,850 expense. Get that job completed.
I would come out.
Fairgrounds. Maintenance and repair.
I would second.
It's all taxpayers' money, just depends on which part we're coming out of, and the fire commission does not have that in there.
And I'm still with that second. I'm still not opposed to having a conversation with the homeowner. My question, kind of along that line, would be, there's a pond there now, it sounds like, and this is overflow from that. If that, if that pond wasn't there, that water's coming into that pond from somewhere. It'd still come on us, the ponds are not there, so. Have a conversation, and he wants to help out, then so be it. If not, then we need to care of our property, so.
I don't disagree with that at all. I just go back to being, somebody needs to be a good neighbor in this, and taxpayers shouldn't fund the entire burden of the problem that his pond has created. Even if there is a spring up there, who's to say which way the spring would have run? It could have run further onto his property. Him putting the pond there and directing that pipe, it goes directly onto our property. I'm not opposed to the project. I just think at least it would be nice to talk to the landowner.
I will go by there when I leave town. They said I was supposed to get that done, I didn't get to it this weekend, but I will go by and talk to Mr. Jones. So we got a motion, a second, any further discussion?
Yes. This is not the fire commission. Fire training facility comes under emergency management, to the best of my knowledge. Fire commission is an advisory board. We have nothing to do with the fire training facility, so separate entity. We have no money anyway to do anything.
Any other discussion? Hold on, favor, raise your right hand. I vote, thank you, gentlemen. Volunteer fire department contract discussion.
Chairman, I can start this. I think since the implementation of the fire tax, it's been a desire by the commissioners to have contracts that correspond with the departments identifying the abilities to utilize these funds that are being contributed to them through the tax levy. Know that we had discussion in previous meetings about the existing contract. And I believe, Miss, you made some revisions to that and sent that out to each of you. I think there was some general comments that were implied back. I believe Commissioner Evans had a more detailed thought process as to those contracts. I will tell you that the citizens of the county continue to ask about those contracts. They continue to ask when they are going to come about and how they're going to be implemented. So today, I think the benefit of those, for the benefit of the commissioners, for the benefit of our attorney, I think we ought to have a discussion about that and kind of have a direction, at least, to, if it's different than what she has put together, at least she has a direction in which to proceed in.
Want to have any questions, concerns for the, for the.
Contract itself?
On the contract, right.
Looking over Donna's last remarks that Mark had sent in, and I've had discussions with you. I think there's, some of the stuff Mark said is very legitimate and should be addressed. Two or three things that concern me, especially now after the earthquake, is taxpayers' money, obviously, with the increase in taxes for the fire departments. Should there be a requirement that these fire departments now carry, whatever you want to call it, catastrophic or earthquake or whatever type tornado damage that we do have occasionally, hurricane damage we do have occasionally. You as a lender or as a borrower trying to buy a new house, the bank requires you to have certain insurance policies. Is this something we need to look at to be sure that these fire departments have an adequate insurance to cover their buildings? Because if one goes down or gets damaged, you know, the first people they're going to come to are the commissioners wanting to raise the taxes to pay for the damage to the building. That, I'm just throwing that out as recent information because of the earthquake. And then another thing is, our departments, if and when they do sign these contracts, if they violate any part of this contract, should there be a clause in there if we have to go to court that they, if they lose, they cover our cost of insurance? I'd look back at what we went through with the jail meal bids. There was a large insurance policy that the county paid, and we had to pay a part of that fee. Just want to be sure we try to protect the county taxpayers as much as we can. I'm not saying they will violate it, I'm just saying if they violate it.
Pause.
May I make a suggestion? As we talk about these, and these are, these are issues that, as we go, we can address them as we go, as opposed to taking a whole combination. So I don't know, I had any thoughts on the catastrophic damage requirement or the violation of the agreements that would basically put the burden of the equal cost on the.
I can put it, in mind, a contract is the meeting of minds between two entities. If you make it too terribly one-sided, they may not sign it.
And they don't get the tax dollars.
They don't have to provide the service.
The service.
They don't get the service, that's right.
Another department picks up their territory. I'm just thinking, we need to protect the taxpayers. Not looking, you know, to hurt anybody. I just think that we should be protected as much as we can. If we would have had that clause in with the meals, then we wouldn't have been stuck with the $25,000.
You only paid a deductible.
Well, the insurance paid for part of it. But part of the settlement was that the county wouldn't sue the other party to recover those costs.
There was no settlement. It was not a settlement.
They dropped, they dropped their claim if we would not ask for those monies to be recovered through the lawsuit. That's exactly what I remember. That was part of their deal when they came to us. We would not countersue them those attorney fees.
We were given a choice, dropping it or not. So I mean, ultimately, that was our decision. That's how I look at that.
If we would have had that clause in there, then we would have gone on to court to see if they would have, if we would have prevailed, which according to the judge and our lawyer from Winston, we did prevail.
Unless we agreed mutually or, you know, you already agreed to do. Unless we agreed mutually, or you na, uh, you already agreed to do different.
I just look to try to protect the taxpayer.
So are those mission like, for those to be included? And I'm just trying to build us a blueprint to where we can get these agreements together and provide direction.
I mean, each of you responded with different things that you want in there, but you're not all on the same page. I can do five different versions and let you pick which version you like, if that's what you want me to do.
Narrow it down. Think we should really look at the, at the insurance. I mean, the... I don't even know that the insurance companies we have are selling it in Sparta right now. I don't know that. Does anybody?
I would think that would be an issue. I think cost would be an issue, and ultimately, cost gets pushed back to the taxpayer.
Exactly.
So... It's a risk assessment.
We'll need to check on premiums, I mean, to sort of see what it's gonna cost, and get back up at another date.
I think with all the concerns that everybody's thrown out, let Donna, she is our county attorney, write the contract in the best way that it affects the people of the county, and it helps the fire department. We're not in the business to put our department out of business, we're just in business of protecting the people of the county.
Mr. Prince?
Just thinking, it's up to Donna. The final.
Oh, yeah. My understanding on the earthquake insurance is but 5% of the property value and 5% of the content value, so it could get pretty expensive. I think, yeah, it would be good to have that cost. It'd be good to talk with the fire departments and see if that's something that they could afford, and that would eat into the, you know, the funds that were left over to cover something like that. And it's something we really should consider. As far as my comments back on the contract, I don't have any problem with dropping those. I think Mark was more thorough in his comment. Thing that still concerns me is we've got five fire departments, and we've got pretty much duplicate equipment in all of them. Requires three of them to show up everything. So to me, there's a, there's a big overuse of new equipment that we probably could do a better job on. I don't know whether that falls on the fire department, or fire commission, or the county commissioners, but to me, it would look like it would save us money future of buying new fire trucks if we got other fire departments gonna show up the same thing.
And we're also limited by what the state requires each fire department to have.
Yep. That's why we have good lawyers. We, if I may, Mr. Chairman, we had also discussed forming a committee to advise us as far as the equipment purchase. We haven't gone any farther than talking about it, but we did discuss that, requesting retired fire members so that we could ask a question if there's redundancy going on, things of this nature. The problem we've got with the fire departments right now is, yes, we have three that show up, but mostly it's tankers bringing in water, because we've got to have enough people to fight the fire. We show up with a tank, with a fire truck with 1,000 gallons, 15 minutes, it's empty. We've got to have follow-on to bring water in. So there's, there's a lot of things that enter into this. Now, as far as insurance, if we, if we get down and we're gonna require things like this, we're getting into the minutia of the operating of these volunteer fire departments. Surely every one of them is looking back at, with their board of directors and saying, well, you know, we might want to get some earthquake insurance. Whenever I went to check on mine, they, they told me that they would not be writing any policies for 72 hours. And my rider for earthquake insurance is not that expensive. It was $10 a year whenever I first took it out. Of course, that was in 2010. So... If the volunteer fire departments want to take that risk and not get earthquake insurance, that's on them. If they think the county's gonna bail them out. The county can't bail them out. It's, it's inexpensive insurance. It's something that I would recommend that they have, especially now that we know that we are on a fault line, and earthquakes are not something to be laughed at. Give it, Mr. Chairman.
Did you say you thought it was about $10?
Whenever I first took my policy out.
That was about 100 years since our previous earthquake.
Yeah, yeah. Now, I'm sure that my renewal is gonna reflect now that they know that we've got the possibility.
Mr. Chairman, would it be, I think we're, I think we've got a lot of ground to cover here to try to put this together in a meeting of this type. Would it be inappropriate to move to a workshop session at some point? As soon, I don't want, I'm like the manager, I think we need to, not trying to put it off.
I would agree with Commissioner Evans on that, and if part of the discussion needs to, we need to have volunteer fire departments available. Ultimately, they've got to agree to this. And if we're putting something that is
I think
acuous, we need to know it.
I agree, but I think we probably need to come together to see what we agree on first, and then bring them in and see what their feedback is, and then try to...
I support that. I support that myself for a workshop.
Yep. I agree.
You good with that, Bobby? Bobby? You good with having a workshop?
Okay.
That'll be in September.
Everyone said it.
Wasn't that our next one?
Talked this before.
That'd be the only time, myself. Better the better.
I would recommend you have it before your September meeting, because a quarter, three of the year, at that point.
And we also are rapidly coming up on a change in county attorneys. Cause I believe you're sworn in.
January.
Your honor, January?
My commitment here, at this point, ends November 30th.
What about the 25th, 6th, 7th of August?
I can't do anything until the week of the 31st.
She can't till the week of the 31st.
If we could do September, I don't have calendar in front of me, September 2nd, is that a Wednesday?
Yes.
The 2nd, 3rd, or 4th?
Good. Good for me.
At what time? I have council on aging meeting that day.
At this point, my day is open.
As you were. No, no. It's the 2nd week, so I'd be good for the 2nd.
We're saying any time's fine.
Time? Early, late?
Yeah.
PM would be great for me.
9 o'clock? 9 o'clock?
On what day?
2nd.
2nd.
2nd. Yeah.
Who will let us know a few days before the meeting?
Any further discussion? We'll move, not, we'll move on. The BB and T signature cards?
Chairman, we, with the recent change in the finance office, we have two employees that are currently listed on the signature cards with BB and T. We have one employee that we need to add to that listing and remove the two that are currently there. So what I would ask is, is twofold. One, to add Sidney Moxley to that signature card, and to remove Karen Evans and Jennifer Boyer, as they are no longer county employees.
2nd. Motion 2nd, any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. I vote. Moving on down, fire grounds, fund budget amendment.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I'm, I'm getting to it. I'm glad to let April handle it, but I'll, I'll keep her out for a moment. You see on your screen on page 6 that the sign was approved for a grant from the TDA in the amount of $5,000. So, we would ask for the board to consider amending the budget in the amount of that $5,000 to approve the purchase of this sign. Of course, that will be done on both expenditure and revenue.
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Motion 2nd, any further discussion?
I just got a question.
Okay.
I think before the sign's purchased, we ought to know what size, the location. $5,000 is not a lot for an electronic sign of any size. I, I just want to be sure it's something that's appropriate. We may need additional money from a fundraiser or something.
If, if you would like, we can have Megan come back, and she can tell you the, I don't know the size or the location, but we can have her come back, and she can identify that rather quickly.
The reason I bring it up, the college had looked at one time about putting an electronic sign down below the Council on Aging Building for Wilkes Community, and Dr. Cox had given a price of roughly $20,000. So for, I can't remember, it's been three or four years of what size sign that was, and how the information was typed into it. I just want to be sure we don't get something that's not appropriate.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor, raise your right hand. I vote. Moving on down, Rita Miller?
Morning.
Morning.
So, um, just have our July monthly reports. The amount on the license plate agency, which I didn't have at the time I turned this in, actually just got it this morning, is $4,476.34 compensation for July, and I'll note that's the highest month that we've had since we opened by $600.
Even though the state has deferred all the license renewals?
Haven't had many. I don't, I don't think many people have taken advantage of that, from what we've seen.
Mr. Chairman, I only have one question, and that is on the contracts with the people that are in default. Have we initiated legal action?
Yes, we have.
Have no questions, Mr. Chairman, no further questions, and would make a motion that we accept the consent agenda.
A motion, or here, 2nd?
2nd.
Motion 2nd, any discussion? In favor, raise your right hand. I vote. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any manager comments?
Chairman, a couple. The first one, on page 18 of your packet, has your July building inspection report. I would encourage everyone to look that over. 2nd. Is facilities update. It changes all the time with, with everything going on. I don't know what else to say about it, but we'll start. Start with this building today. So with the recent earthquake and the happenings that have gone along with that, last week has been quite busy. And aside from a little cosmetic damage that you notice walking in the hallways, or maybe a crack or two on the walls, and scratch or two here and there, we're pretty fortunate in this building, I believe. We are gonna have to spend some money to make some, some wall repairs, and some hallway repairs, and some flooring repairs. One of the larger items that we've noticed this past week is we have an HVAC unit. We have several, actually, on top of this building, but one of them decided it doesn't want to work anymore. So, not asking you to, to, to do anything with that today. Today is information. It's $8,100 to replace that unit. So as we continue to compile information, I know Travis is gonna speak with one of the engineers about the, how the earthquake could have impacted that unit itself as well. So, once we get a little more information on this facility, I'll give it to you, but I can, I can tell you right now, there's probably, I would say probably $15,000 to $20,000 worth of repairs to this building, when you include that HVAC unit. Um, I'll move on to the, do the old Council on Aging Building first, believe it or not. Didn't see much of a problem at all in that building. It seems to be just as solid on the inside as it is on the outside. There may be five, huh? Yeah, yeah. There may be five or six scratches, minor. They're gonna get redone when we reconfigure that anyway, so not really concerned with that. I do have a couple of structural engineers up today. They are going to be poking some holes in the walls of that building to determine a few things for the renovation into the courtroom facility. It's, it's part of the process. So, I've actually got them a long list, and as I go through each building, I'll, I'll say where they're going, but they will be there today as well. The new Council on Aging Building, got a couple things. We're waiting to get the health department. There's a drain for the ice maker that, for whatever reason, wasn't in the plans. So we're trying to get a, a solution to that. I don't think that that's going to be a big problem. There, there are alternative ways to take care of that issue, and they are cost-effective. So, when I say that that's an issue, it is an issue, but I don't look for that to be a big issue. We've got a self-closer to put up. That's about it. That building is probably 99.5% done. I will remind, you know, I've hammered and hammered and hammered on having July, the end of July is the turnover date for that building. As I've identified also, our maintenance team is, is, uh... We have a, we have a team of I right now. So there is I in team. We have one member doing that right now. So please keep that in mind. Move on to courthouse. As, as everyone is aware, with the external surface of the courthouse, we had a very concerning chimney that was damaged with the earthquake. At our work session, we talked briefly about that. I'm happy to say the next day, that chimney was taken down, the, the damaged portion of that chimney was taken down. So there's no longer a concern with that. Also have the structural engineers, I turned them loose in there this morning. They're looking at the walls inside the courtroom. There, there was a significant crack in the wall behind where the judge sits. But, the initial response this morning, that's where I was at this morning, it's non-life threatening. It's, it's, it's going to take a process, you know, that, that courthouse has a lot of plaster. It has a lot of block that is not seen. So the repairing process for those structural cracks is not, a little bit of smear, putty, and go on. There's a process to it. So they're gonna be identifying all of those. The, we've had conversations in the past about the remaining 10 on the courthouse roof. Sent an email out about that, an engineer's estimate. Uh, and, and again, this is just an engineer's estimate, but the abatement to repair the transition between the two to, uh, and this is, this is, uh... Depending on what material we put back on that roof, so keep that in mind as well. If you put a coating on it that is similar to what's there now, and a re-roof, put in the gutters and downspouts, and there's a few of the, uh, membrane- the gutters and downspouts, and there's a few of the membrane roof that we might as well make some repairs to while we're doing it, they're all, they're basically a weld process. We're somewhere in the $44,000, $45,000 range on that roof. Now, what I'm working with them now on is determining how we go about that and the process in which. We're going to have a lot of work going on with that courthouse. We're going to have roofing, we're going to have some moisture work inside, and now we're going to have some other work due to the earthquake. Believe it or not, I haven't figured out how we're going to do all that just yet, because with court going on, you know, the roof's not that bad. I mean, we can figure out a weekend, we can figure out some of that, but some of this stuff, it's going to take some time to figure that out. And much like everything else, we're getting, we're halfway through the year already. So, hopefully, we can put our heads together and come up with a good plan for you guys in September to think about how we do this, but the structural components, it's not going to take a whole lot of coordination with, but definitely the roofing, that's going to take some coordination. The moisture, I will tell you, I had a contractor, I think we talked about this as well, I had a contractor come in at the end of last week, on Friday, to look at the moisture concerns. And I was unable to get your information to you, and I'm not asking you for any commitment, but I will tell you that to remedy the moisture concerns inside the building, I've got a price of about $13,650. Now, here's where the coordination takes place. No use doing the inside when the outside's still leaking. We've got to figure out how we get this done in an appropriate timeframe. Roofing 45, interior 13.6. Also keep in mind, when we're talking about the internal, this is basically the removal of the damaged interior surfaces. This is not, and I emphasize, is not, getting the sheet rock or the plaster or the paint, that's totally separate. This group does the remediation. It does not do the construction. So, that's a timeframe. Then on top of that, we'll have to have the repair and construction done, which is another timeframe. A lot going on right there, right now. A lot of my time has been right there at that facility, in addition to all of our other facilities. I'll also tell you, there's been some concern about some of our other facilities, 90 South Main, as one as a result of the earthquake. I've got the structural guys today also going to that site. A lot of what the state has done has kind of been like a windshield tour. You know, they've got so many things to go to, they have to try to condense them. I brought these guys in to do a more detailed analysis of it, because we're talking about life and human safety right here. So they will also go to 90 South Main, they will also go to the jail today, because there are some cracks in the blocks around that jail. So it's a big, it's a big day. It's a big time, it's a big, a lot of things are going on, and I know, I fully know what degree we're at with trying to get these things done. This puzzle just keeps growing, and I like puzzles. You give me a puzzle, I'll figure it out, but I just ask that your patience is here to allow me the time to get it figured out. This is not deciding on the color of the next chairs. This is not figuring out that this table's going to break if somebody sits on it. These require time and patience, so I give you this information. If you have any questions about any of it, I'd be glad to answer it.
I, for one, appreciate the job you're doing, and it's, I know you're overwhelmed and covered up, and we need to have patience, because it takes time to get all this stuff together. Anybody got any questions? Remind them.
Keep your sanity.
Yeah.
Last item on county manager comments, and I think we talked about this at the work session as well, but just to mention that there has been a quarter cent sales tax marketing committee established. And I'd ask Drew to give me a listing of the individuals on it, because quite honestly, I couldn't remember who was on it. And maybe, maybe some of these names need to grow or need to come off, but here's what listing we have. We have Commissioner Osborne, Commissioner John Irwin.
I deferred whenever Mr. Osborne took it.
Yeah, so we can...
Turn on down.
We have Rita Miller, who's upstairs, Bill Caveney, Lisa Bottomley, Ryan Wilmeth from the town, and Drew informed me today that Cole Edwards is asked to be placed on there as a council member. I think there was conversation about a meeting date in town.
One o'clock today, I believe.
One o'clock today. Where is that, just out of curiosity?
D.C.
And I have one more, I had to write down somewhere. So I have two more. A reminder that the first meeting in September is actually Labor Day. So the meeting date, due to it being a recognized holiday, is to be moved to the following Tuesday, which is the 8th of September at 6:00. Then the last item that I have, Commissioner John Irwin had sent an email about some grant opportunities. Asked about how we get some of this information out there, and basically what you see on the screen is the link that's provided for this, so we'll figure out a way to get that information out. It impacts businesses or nonprofits, so just want to get that word out as well. One of the remaining things that I would mention is the CARES Act money, and we seem to have a lot of interest in that. We're still compiling our data. We have those funds, but hopefully, within the next two to four weeks, we'll be able to come to you guys and provide a plan of how we would like to distribute those funds. Know that we've identified different uses when we made the application, but we'll define that a little more in detail. All right, Mr. Chairman?
Thank you, sir.
And Megan's back to talk about the sign real quick.
Numbers I had found for the digital sign at the fairgrounds, and it's just the basic words. It doesn't do pictures or anything like that. It's just message boards, kind of like Daniel has throughout the county, but it is to fit in the existing sign area, so it's same size and it's $4,000 per side. So we're looking eight to $10,000 range. So I had asked for half from the TDA, and then we will do the fundraising and be in with the fairgrounds board and in discussion with them to come up with the other half of the funds.
Installation included?
Yes, sir. And lifetime maintenance.
It's programmable by a computer?
Yes, you can even do an app on your phone, type the different messages that you want scrolled across, so it's much more, much more user-friendly and efficient than having to go out there in the pouring rain or snow to change those letters.
Certainly.
Yes. Anything else?
Other questions? We thank you. Thank you. Mr. Comments?
I don't have a lot, Mr. Chairman. I just would like to extend a thank you again to all of our county folks and emergency people and Everett Daniel and his staff, and all the outside support that we've been getting, and I agree that we would all recognize these challenging times and unite together and try to support them for all that they've done.
Bobby?
Just like to remind everybody, school started today, so we need to be careful of the school buses that are out there picking up the children who decided to go to school, and there's a couple of different programs, so I just ask for the parents and everybody to be a little bit easy on everybody today, because it'll take a few days to work out all the new, new systems that they have going. I would like to thank, like Mark did, the, our inspections, had to take a few pictures of some different people's houses. I spent a little time upstairs with Tom, again, with all the other people. One day I went in there and I opened the door a little bit fast, and here the inspectors are eating, eating their dinner on their lap, or some of them are standing up, walking around, eating their dinner. They spent 10 or 15 minutes there, then they were back out on the job. I don't think they wasted two minutes in a whole week that they were here. They were working constantly. And all the county staff that doesn't work for the inspection department, emergency management, that stepped in, helped answer the phone, made notes, it's sort of amazing sitting up there watching everybody. At one time, I thought they were taking notes with two, with two hands at the same time, but I do, I do appreciate all the hard work that they've done. I know on the courthouse, there was hope that there would be some money in the mini-budget from the legislature, but I understand that didn't, didn't make it into the committees.
Mr. John?
Yes. Now, everybody may think that I was rough on the emergency management. My complaint is not with what they're doing, they are doing human service. They have been out, they've been working their fingers to the dagon bone, but whenever you start in things of this nature, you've got to have checklist. If you don't have checklist, if you do not have a plan, something is going to slip through the cracks. And I'll give you the classic example. August the 12th, or whenever we first met, right after Bobby asked the, Bobby Irwin asked the question, what about the bridges? Oh, I hadn't forgot about that. Forgot about it. Then we got on it. Whenever you have an event such as this, we've had to, October the 23rd, 2017, with the wind event on the eastern part of the county, whenever we have blowdowns, power outages and everything else, everything kicked in. It cannot fly by the seat of our pants. We have got to have people informed. We must inform people, you must bring people into a central location or have some means of transmitting the communications. That's why the EOC is there. Now, granted, our emergency action plan is a rudimentary fill-in-the-blanks, it's a generic, but it works. It gives us what we need to do, if properly utilized. Now, again, the performance is outstanding. I'd like to compliment them on what they've done. They've put in the time, they've been out there, but just a simple matter of filling out a form, number of structures damaged, major damage, families displaced, would help us in a tremendous amount, because it gives us a sense of how bad this damage is whenever we have something like this. So, this is something, hopefully, we will have a hot wash we can go over, instead of looking like chickens running around and we, everybody thought that the sky was falling. Actually, I didn't know that it was such an event, because we didn't, we didn't even have a picture fall off. It was nothing in Twin Oaks area. And then whenever I started, whenever I came to town and started driving around, I became aware of how bad it was. Now, recently, I've received a couple of phone calls. People are concerned about employees in the county buildings not wearing masks, people being allowed to enter the public buildings not wearing masks. Ladies and gentlemen, as I explained to one gentleman that called, the county employees are trying to take structure damage calls. We are jumping through the hoops. They are mature individuals, all, I don't think we have anyone that is less than 21 years of age. They are adults. They can make the decision whether to wear the mask or not. It is not mandated, as I understand. I don't wear one all the time, because I have difficulty breathing. There are people that have medical reasons. Now, the county employees, we have physical barriers up to protect them. We have gone and done what they need to do. It really concerned me, whenever someone is more concerned about the physical wearing of a mask and their neighbors that have been displaced out of their homes because they are no longer livable. Perhaps somewhere on the face of the earth, there is someone that never heard that Sparta had a century earthquake, granted, but these county employees have had a tremendous burden put on them. They're trying to help the citizens of Allegheny County by taking their reports. They may, in the haste of the moment, forget to put on a mask, but in the long run, whenever you're dealing with loss of property and life, it's a small thing. So, and I understand that some of the county employees have taken some flak. Well, Admiral Eddie Rickenbacker, he said, government, you say and you do. Government says that they will do something, and they just keep on saying it. Seldom do they do. I am continually surprised. I am continually surprised in how we have run the government in Allegheny County in the past. Does not apply to this board, or the one prior. I was surprised to learn that as of December, excuse me, 28th September, 2012, Business Development Center owns the farmer's market. Set up an entity, they can own property, and apparently, they do. They own the farmer's market. Now, whenever you look at Allegheny Farmer's Market, you'd think that the county was running that. Nope. Got a complaint. Hi, there was no manager at the farmer's market over Saturdays, on Saturdays. Apparently, he doesn't work the weekends. That's a big time for this farmer's market. So for, I will inform the gentleman that asked me that question to contact the BDC. They own it, they must be running it, so we will see what's up. Also, I have been rather outspoken about a lot of things as far as committees in this county. I'm from the old school. Whenever you ask me to go on a committee, I go on a committee to do something, to make sure that things are run properly. Apparently, we have some that do not believe in that, but they do look at it as a resume builder. We've been asking questions. I asked a question of the Allegheny County Economic Development Committee through a letter. Is requesting that the following information be provided at the above address. Copies of the 2018, 2019 Form 990, and so the 2014 through 2020 annual meeting, and of all meetings in 2019, and a copy of your bylaws. Two weeks, I went out on July the 31st. This is the committee, and I contacted one of the members of the committee, and she advised me that she doesn't remember having a meeting of the Allegheny County Economic Development Corporation for at least 10 years. Now, they will not go away. Now, they will not go away. I understand that they've had a recent meeting, because I've called it into question. I understand that there's money there. Now, the question is, they can't go away, because part of the money that, uh, that they are, they've borrowed or received a grant for, I should say, is for the extension of the sewer line out to the Allegheny County group homes. It's my understanding, the outstanding balance on that money is quite a bit less than the money that is in their accounts. Which, by the way, whenever you look at their Form 990, granted, it's three years old, uh, that's a, quite an increase. The question will become, once that, uh, grant is paid off, what will happen to the excess money? Because we have set it up in a 501(c)(3), a separate caution, uh, corporation, we cannot, as I understand it, dictate how they're going to operate. So, if they want to, if they got twenty thousand dollars left over, and they want to take a trip to Las Vegas, they can do it. We gave up our, uh, control over it whenever we allowed it to be formed as a 501(c)(3). Uh, good, it performed good things, it's the way we've got Magnolia, but, uh, I just wanted to go, this, as I look at the way things have been set up and done in the past, it was simply a means of put it out there, let the committee run it. That way, the county's got their fingers out of it, and those people that wanted to put on their resume, that they're a committee member, they can do it with minimum work. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, have a good day.
Commissioner Brins?
No comment.
I have a whole lot I want to say, and things got sidetracked on the front end of this meeting. I think it's, it's unfair to the people that come in here to speak to us to be talked to the way they were talked to a while ago, in all honesty. Uh, I think it makes the whole board look bad, and I don't know what the other commissioners' feelings are, and that's, that's their prerogative. But I think it needs to change. I think that people come in here, we need to treat them with respect. Better than mine. There's one thing for sure in closing. When you're sitting over there trying to blow everybody's candle out, you're not making yours burn any brighter. I think this style of, of questioning and raising our voices needs to stop. Thank you.
Say one more thing, Mr. Chairman. Bobby reminded me, and I meant to make a comment of this. He alluded to the, the two million dollars. That was actually part of the state budget last year that never come to fruition. As, as I understand it, I think there's a conversation has been revisited since, since we've been trying for years to get Allegheny County on the map, and the good Lord did it at the snap of his fingers, that that discussed, that has been revisited with, uh, within our legislature. Where it's going to go, I don't know, but I think it would be behoove all of us to individually go and, and reach out many times to our representatives, uh, while, while it's fresh, to be able to hopefully capitalize on that. That's my thoughts.
Mr. Chairman, that information that I, uh, transmitted, that is, uh, from the Speaker's office. The mini-budget has been passed, and that, those funds were not in there. So, it's fait accompli.
But that was, that was actually last year.
This is this year's.
Well, that was now.
So, I understand.
The mini-budget was last year. This is a new year. Since it didn't come to fruition, and they didn't get a budget, they were trying to do mini-budgets, and that didn't come through. They all are now recognizing that we're on the map, and we're on the list, and now I think they're trying to revisit, hopefully, for us because of that.
We have requests to go into closed session under General Statute 143, Day 318, dot one-one, dot A slash six, personnel.
Motion to do so, do we need to add our, uh, human resources slash finance officer?
Yes. And, Mr. Chairman, I would like a delay of ten minutes, so that we can take care of personal needs.
Certainly, I agree.
Second.
Motion second, go into closed session.
All favor, raise your hand.